I'm John Gibson. Welcome to WNIEN's Local Election 2020 Coverage. Thank you for joining us to learn more about the candidates for local offices and their positions on the issues. In order to limit interactions this year, we'll be talking with the candidates one-on-one, some in person with adequate distancing and some remotely. The order of appearance of the candidates was determined by draw. Later on, we'll be meeting the candidates for Vanderburg County Council at large, but first up, we'll meet the candidates for Vanderburg County Commissioner District One. Vanderburg County Commissioners are elected every four years. District One represents the eastern part of Vanderburg County. Joining us now is Zach Raisher. He's a Republican running for the District One Vanderburg County Commission seat. Thank you for joining us, Zach. We appreciate it.
Hey, thank you for having me.
All right. Well, tell the voters a little bit about yourself, if you would, and why you're running for Vanderburg County Commission.
Sure, sure. My name is Zach Raisher. I'm a lifelong resident, currently in project management for a financial technology company here locally called SSNC Technologies. You know, I love my community. I want to do my part. And some of the reasons why I want to be in this position, to run, is to really bring normalcy back to the county commission. I don't currently feel as the county commission is working well with county council, especially with everything going on with the pandemic. We really need to make sure that every dollar's accounted for. You know, I come from an accounting background, and I think that having somebody like that on the commission will really pay dividends down the road.
All right. Well, you mentioned a few things there, but what do you see as the major issues facing Vanderburg County in the next four years?
Sure. I think, you know, the biggest issue that we're going to face is the budget shortfall that we're expected to have over the next year or two because of the current pandemic. You know, I think that the role of county commissioner is a serious role, and it takes somebody that's going to take it serious to be in that position. It's not one for unserious people. And, you know, whether it be voting on studies and all this type of stuff that we're wasting money on, we need to make sure that we're holding onto those dollars right now and allocating them appropriately. I can't tell you how many hundreds of thousands we've spent on studies that lead to boat docks to nowhere, sidewalks to nowhere, corridors to nowhere, jails to nowhere. We need to be able to be more thoughtful with our spending, and that's what I hope to do.
Well, COVID-related deaths and infections have been surging, as you probably know. The Vanderburg County Health Board has unanimously recommended more stringent restrictions in fighting the coronavirus, limiting social gatherings to 50 people, reducing restaurants and bars to half-capacity, requiring bars to close by midnight. What do you think of those recommendations, Mr. Raisher? Do you support those?
Well, yeah, at this point, I feel like we're playing damage control. And, you know, I think that if drastic measures like those need to be taken in order to, you know, get the current surge under control, I'm more than happy to look at those types of measures compared to having to shut down again. I do know there was a recent report that said that the, based upon the contact tracing, the biggest area seems to be retail stores. So I'm not, you know, 100% as to how effective those would be. However, with, again, the lack of leadership that came from the county commissioners, it's unfortunate that we're in the position that we are now, where cases are spiking and we are having to look at such measures. So, you know, it's tough that we're in this spot now. I wish that they had done more sooner, but it's the world we live in at the moment.
Right, right. Would you like to see more COVID relief from the state and federal governments come to Vanderburg County?
Yeah, I would like to see, I'd like to see as much support as we can get, whether that be monetarily, or people, or experts down at this area to help us as much as possible. I think the coordination, the collaboration between the local level, the local regional level, as well as with the state level is, really needs to happen, and we need to continue, we need to continue advocating for our area. Again, I feel like this is all stuff that should have been happening from the beginning, you know, but here we are.
Yes, indeed. Well, one of the issues that you would be facing in the short term is the Vanderburg County jail. It's been bursting at the seams, and the state says we must have more jail space. How would you go about expanding the jail?
Sure, definitely. You know, we've had the, what was it, two years ago, that the state told us we had to do something about this. We've paid for multiple studies, yet nothing's happening. And I really think that, again, it speaks to a lack of leadership. You know, county commissioner is a serious job, and it takes a serious person to be able to get in there and pull everybody together and try to come up with a solution. You know, this isn't one of those things that we can just hope our way out of, or wish that the problem goes away. We need to pull everybody together. We need to understand what the best course of action is, and we need to implement it. You know, one thing I do with my current role with SSNC is to deal in project management and make sure that, you know, we all understand what the goal is. We pull everybody together, and we solve problems. I don't think that my opponent has been wanting to solve this problem. And I hope that we, I hope that I can lead that charge.
Just quickly, there's been a proposal for a new courtroom in the civic center that would, you know, theoretically reduce the number of inmates waiting for their day in court. What do you think of that idea in just a few seconds, please?
Yeah, sure. I, you know, I would be willing to entertain all ideas. And that's one of the reasons I say I wish that we could get everybody to the table and discuss, whether it be out-of-the-box ideas, not the norm. But all I can say is we're on an unsustainable path. We're not going to be able to keep this up, and we need to solve the problem.
All right. Zach Raisher, he's running for the District One seat on the Vanderburg County Commission. Thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm joined now in the studio by Ben Shoulders, the incumbent Democrat on the Vanderburg County Commission, District One. We should point out that Mr. Shoulders has done a little work for WNIEN in the past, just in the, just for full disclosure there. Ben, thank you so much for joining us. Tell the voters a little bit about yourself and why you're running for reelection to Vanderburg County Commissioners.
Well, thank you, John. Great to be with you. And thank you to WNIEN for conducting this event today. Again, my name is Ben Shoulders. I am currently one of your Vanderburg County Commissioners. Born and raised here in Evansville, Indiana, went to Harrison High School, currently working banking and have for the last 17 years. And quite frankly, John, I love our community. That's why in January 2016, I decided to run for public office, because I've always felt public service is the purest form of servant leadership and the most effective way to make a difference in our community. So that is why I've decided to run for reelection.
All right. You've been there four years. At this point, what do you see are the major issues facing Vanderburg County in the next four years?
Well, first and foremost, obviously, it's COVID-19. We continue to, and I'm sure we'll discuss this more in depth here today, but that is our number-one priority. Number-one issue is keeping our county citizens safe during this time, and that has been our laser focus now for going on eight months.
Now, as I'm sure you know, COVID-related deaths and infections have been surging lately. The Vanderburg County Health Board recently recommended more stringent restrictions to fight the coronavirus, things like limiting social gatherings to 50 people, reducing restaurant and bars to half-capacity, requiring bars to close by midnight. Do you agree with those recommendations?
Some of them I do, and some of them I feel like we have worked with our mayor's office, the city, as well as my fellow county commissioners, as well as many other small business owners, to continue to listen and take proper steps. So I take all of them under advisement, and I work closely with the Health Department. We work closely with the Health Department. But right now, we are still trying to gather information and go forward. So some of them I do, John, and some of them I feel like we still need to get, gather a little bit more information first.
And I should point out, as we are recording this interview, there has not been any new action by the Vanderburg County Health Board. I understand they do have a meeting coming up in the next couple of days here. Well, you mentioned the impact, the financial impact of COVID-19. It's been tremendous on everybody and every municipality. Would you like to see more COVID relief from the state and federal governments?
Yes. I believe that, you know, our frontline, if you will, and not just healthcare-related frontline workers, but our small business owners, our restaurateurs, our hotel owners, have so many other industries, travel, have been drastically affected. And at the end of the day, John, we have an economy to run here locally. We have a budget to balance. Our county council continues to do a wonderful job in balancing that budget. I believe they now have, I want to say, 16 years in a row, and this year they did again. So I would like to see more relief. I feel like locally, we have a good relationship with the state, and we can continue to work with them and collaborate for, to see, hopefully, more relief.
Now, of course, we don't know how much longer the pandemic's going to last. When this vaccine may show up, we all hope it soon, of course. What will the county budget look like? What will the budget have to be cut? Will taxes have to be raised during these difficult times?
Yeah, those are all great questions. As far as what the county budget looks like, right now, we don't know. All we can do is take this, you know, if we've learned anything right now, among other things, it's, one, we can have a lot of Zoom meetings now and not in person, but more importantly, or equally as important, we also can't forecast out. You know, wearing my banker hat now and have for 17 years, a lot of what we do is forecast and plan ahead for companies. Well, right now, no different in the county, you can't really do that, because obviously, lack of revenue, thus, you don't know the expense side yet and so forth. So we are looking at more short-term than we are long-term, because we're unable to, because like, as you said, John, we don't know where COVID's going, and we don't know how long this is going to be. There's no timeline or shot clock. So raising taxes, no, that is not on my plate to do anytime soon. However, we do need to make some sacrifices, and we've asked our department heads to do that. They did, and again, want to sing the praises and kudos to our county council for once again balancing the budget.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one issue that I guess is sort of on the back burner right now, but that is the Vanderburg County jail, which has been bursting at the seams, and the state has said that we must have more jail space. How would you go about expanding the jail? How do you see that working its way out?
Yeah. So about two years ago, maybe even two and a half, our community formed what was called the Blue Ribbon Committee. And it was chaired by our county sheriff, Dave Wedding. It was co-chaired by our county prosecutor, Nick Herman. We had commissioners on there, several members from county council, several state reps, several judges, Superior Court judges, and so forth. I believe the Circuit Court was on there as well. And we once again collaborated and started, several of those were, we had folks come up, you know, more of a listening session, if you will. And from there, we started discussing, you know, what were next steps. And, you know, from there, we then engaged numerous different consultants. We had a lot of discussions and meetings, but long story short, I think there were four options, I believe, presented from the consultant to county council. And then, of course, unfortunately, COVID hit. And so that has, that has not been on the forefront from a financial standpoint.
Right, right. Okay. I'll tell you, time is running out. So just quickly, the jail project is pretty much frozen until some sort of COVID...
It's in council's hands, and I believe that until we know more about where COVID's going, I believe that's where it's at.
All right. That is Ben Shoulders, a Democrat running for reelection in Vanderburg County Commission, District One. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, John, so much. And I ask for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates for Vanderburg County Commissioner, District One, for joining us. Next up is the Vanderburg County Council at Large race. There are three county councilors-at-large elected every four years. If you vote a straight party ticket, you must select your choices individually for this race. I'm joined now by Amy Beck, a county council candidate for an at-large seat on the county council. She's a Democrat. Amy, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
Glad you could join us via Skype. Well, for starters here, let's just tell the voters a little bit about yourself and why you're running for the county council seat.
Sure, I would be happy to. A little bit about myself, a quick background. I graduated from Indiana University in political science and have worked at the Association of Indiana Counties, legislative assistant for the Indiana House of Representatives, worked at the University of Evansville. I've been a director at the Southwest Indiana Chamber and recently worked on the Mayor's Substance Abuse Task Force. And I live on the west side with my husband, Jim, and our four kids. So I decided to run for county council because, to be a fresh voice for what the county council needs and really what the Vanderburg County residents deserve. Just my background and experience will allow a much-needed new perspective to move our community forward in economic advancement and quality of life issues. But more...
As we speak about issues, let's talk a little bit about what you see are the major issues facing Vanderburg County in the next four years.
Sure. Well, for our county council, I think we need to, we're going to need some, a new creation of revenue sources, and also the jail expansion. I think you're going to hear about that some more. Those are, those are two top issues I think we'll hear about.
Right, right. Now, obviously, the COVID pandemic is affecting everyone in some way or another. It's certainly been squeezing budgets in various municipalities. Would you like to see more COVID relief from the state or federal governments come to Vanderburg County?
Yes, I think a lot of local governments could be in some trouble without some relief from our federal government. I think we have an amazing opportunity here to rebuild our city and county government and collaborate together and work together to, for government efficiency. My vision is to see our county government create an HR department to streamline those HR practices, hiring paperwork, and then, you know, again, collaborate with the city so that we can help bring in this revenue that I think is going to be out there. And I think we need to hire a full-time grant writer. There's going to be money out there. We just have no idea the opportunities that will be. We need to get our ducks in a row so that we're ready to get that, get that funding. I also want to add that I've recently been endorsed by many city councilors, all three county commissioners, and our Southwest Indiana Chamber. So I feel like I have built those relationships to really, to really help with this organization.
Now, you mentioned finding new sources of revenue, and of course, with the uncertainty of the pandemic, well, there's just a lot of uncertainty as to where, you know, where money's going to come from and how you can put together, say, the next county budget. Do you see, you know, budget cuts as a possibility? Do you see tax increases as a possibility?
Sure. My first thing that I would want to do again is the government efficiency, streamline our government services, the HR practices with the county government, and then again, invest in a full-time grant writer that I think will help bring grants in, both through government and private grants, before really looking at any tax increases or budget cuts.
Yeah. Well, you mentioned the Vanderburg County jail. It's been bursting at the seams for a while, and the state tells us we have to, we have to have more jail space. How do you go about paying for expanding the jail, which I assume that's what it's going to, what it's going to take?
Sure. I think that's a very good question. And as you mentioned, the state did tell Vanderburg County three years ago that we were in noncompliance because of our overcrowding, and our county council has not yet made a decision. It's a big decision that needs to be made, but again, it has to be made. You eventually need to get that decision taken care of. But what I really want to do, I've taken a tour of the jail. There's absolutely public safety issues that need to be addressed, and I'm all for that. I want to step back and take a look at why we're overcrowded. Why do we have so many people that are going into our jail, that are in our system, and really look at that and make real investments in accessible mental health care and substance abuse prevention and treatment. I truly, truly believe that a comprehensive prevention strategy will help reduce our jail population, will save county tax dollars, and will absolutely show that we're a growth-minded community, forward-thinking, and that we just, we care about our people. And that's what I would love to focus on. I really wouldn't even want to have a conversation about a jail expansion if that's not part of it. We have got to be proactive.
I see. Now, there has been an idea floated about a proposed new courtroom in the civic center, maybe using some of the old jail space there. Do you support that idea?
Yes, I was at that council meeting when the judges were there to discuss those build-outs. It would be about three to four million dollars. They had already figured out kind of how to pay for that build-out and what that would do to, again, help people through our system quicker, and could potentially, because of that, perhaps not be, look at such a big expansion for our jail. So I do support it, but again, we need to be proactive and look at why there are so many people through this system. That is really a main priority of mine.
Gotcha. All right. We will have to leave it there. Amy Beck, county council at-large candidate on the Democratic side. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm joined now by Ed Bassmeyer, a Democrat running for county council at large. Ed, thank you so much for joining us today. We certainly appreciate it.
Pleasure being here, sir.
Good to have you. Well, let's start by just telling the voters a little bit about yourself and why you're running for Vanderburg County Council.
I'm a lifelong resident of Vanderburg County. I've been your public servant for several years as a county councilman, deputy sheriff, and professional firefighter with the Evansville Fire Department as a squad captain. Also worked at the Evansville Regional Airport as a fire chief, security coordinator, and training director. At the present time, I'm employed at the Evansville Vanderburg County Building Authority as a special police officer. I've owned and managed a couple of businesses, one being emergency ambulance and wheelchair transportation service for the physical challenge, and own an investment company renting homes to low-income families. As a councilman, I had the honor of serving in several special capacities. Three years as the county council president, two years as chairman of personnel finance for the job study, 12-member board, been a member of the Community Corrections Advisory Board, liaison for the airport board, also liaison for the Pigeon Creek Greenway Passage. Some of the major projects I've supported funding for over the years are the extension Lynch Road, University Parkway, the African American Museum, Discovery Lodge at Bradette Park, Ford Center, Old National Event Plaza, Central Library, the Convention Hotel.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, obviously, you've got a lot of, lot of experience there, and you've been on the county council before, as you've mentioned. So quite a, quite a bit of experience there. So what do you see as the major issues facing Vanderburg County now and in the next four years?
Well, I'll tell you what, one good thing, the council approved the budget for 2021, and I'm glad to hear that all the employees got a raise, including the Sheriff's Department. I think, I think Evansville's going to move forward. I know in my 20 years on the council, made a lot of major, supported a lot of major projects, like the University Parkway and several other major projects. I think we're going to move forward. We've got a good mayor, and I've worked with Mayor Wenneke, and he's got everything, got everything under control. And I look for the prosper and we'll move forward.
Well, let's talk about, obviously, one overarching issue, and that is the COVID pandemic. That doesn't seem to be under control at the moment. It's been squeezing budgets everywhere. Obviously, we've seen a lot of deaths and infections lately from COVID-19. What would you like to see? Would you like to see more COVID relief coming from the state and federal governments for Vanderburg County?
Well, absolutely. I mean, we need all the help we can get. No, this is very serious, and people need to take, it's serious. People need to really, really do what they're supposed to do, wear their mask and stay apart and do what you're told to do. And, no, it's, it's very dangerous. And we should, we should, being a public safety officer, I tell you what, we better do what they tell us to do.
Right, right. Now, you mentioned the budget has been passed, the county budget for 2021. But of course, with the pandemic going on, there has to be a lot of uncertainty, right? I mean, do you feel that, you know, will there have to be some budget cuts? Would taxes have to be increased? What are your thoughts going forward with all this uncertainty?
Well, I'll tell you what, I always did, prioritize everything. We need to work very closely with our departmental heads and office holders and find out what their needs are and make the, and make the necessary cuts. And it's, but, but I like to say, in the last 20 years I've been on the county council, we've bounced the budget every year. And of course, every year is tight with the insurance and everything, but I think we've all, all have done a good job on the county council.
One more issue to touch on before we wrap up, and that is the Vanderburg County jail. It's been bursting at the seams, as I'm sure you know. The state says we have to have more jail space. How would you go about paying for expanding the jail?
Well, talking, talking with the sheriff, sadly to say, with the overcrowding, we need to enlarge the jail. We need to not, be careful not to overbuild, but currently make sure we don't overbudget for it. There are a lot of, need to point this out, there's a lot of inmates in the jail that's, they need rehab and not incarceration. I think we need the partnership with, with the mental health facilities and rehab facilities, and we need to put, I really need to put the pressure on the General Assembly that shifted all these, these low-fellin' inmates into our, from their state prisons to our jail, and it just over, it's, it causes more problems. I think we need more, we need more courtrooms. We need more, more judges. And when I was on the Sheriff's Department, we had the same problem. It's not only, it's not only dangerous for the deputies or the correction officers, it's also dangerous for the prisoners. And definitely got to do something.
All right. We will have to leave it there. Ed Bassmeyer, Democrat, running for county council at large. Thank you so much for joining us.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm joined now by Joanne Hahn. She's a candidate for Vanderburg County Council at Large. Joanne, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for inviting me.
Well, it's good to have you here. Well, for starters, just tell the voters a little bit about yourself, if you would, and why you're running for a seat on the Vanderburg County Council.
I'm a lifelong resident of this area. My forefathers came here from Germany, and myself personally, I am graduated, graduated from Indiana University with a degree in political science and business management, as well as environmental sciences. And after that, I worked at General Springleaf, which was American General back in its day. Now many people refer to it as Springleaf. And I worked in the financial aspects of that. Decided to go become a teacher. And so this is my 30th year teaching, college government, regular government, regular economics, college economics, constitutional law. And I'm also the coordinator for the Randall T. Shepherd Leadership and Law Academy. And I've always been about doing civic duty, serving your public. And so this is one of the reasons I'm running.
I see, I see. Well, you're running for Vanderburg County Council, which of course is the financial arm of county government.
It is. Deals with property taxes and taxation.
Sure, sure. Well, what do you see as the major issues facing Vanderburg County in the next four years?
Well, obviously, with this pandemic, economically, we've been hit hard. Thankfully, not as hard as what other areas, cities have been. But still, enough of an impact that we've seen several small businesses been affected and in fact, closed their doors. and in fact, closed their doors. Several people are unemployed. And so I see from the big picture is getting those people back into good-paying jobs and bringing new businesses back into the community as well.
Would you like to see more COVID relief, say, from the state or federal governments for Vanderburg County?
I would always think that would be a great opportunity. Any kind of tax dollars to help out would be a benefit.
Now, the Vanderburg County Council has already passed a budget for 2021, but obviously, the future is very uncertain right now with the pandemic. How do you see the future? I mean, will the budget have to be cut? Would taxes have to be increased? What is your vision for this uncertain future?
Well, I'm a financial conservative, and I really believe that local government is built on the financial backs of the American consumers and especially Evansville consumers. And so we definitely have to be watching every single dollar that we spend for our budget and make sure that it's not overextended. I don't see where it would be very popular to be able to increase taxes. One of the things that I bring to the table with my background in financial backing is, and with being the coordinator of the Shepherd Academy, is I've had to fundraise every single dollar. And one of the things that has become a forte of mine is grant writing. There are a lot of grants that are out there, both state and federal levels, and they are untapped. And before we would ever start seeking additional money from our Evansville citizens, I think we ought to look towards those to try to help relieve some of the, instead of taxing the people.
Now, the Vanderburg County Council, one assumes, in the near future, will have to deal with the Vanderburg County Jail. It's been bursting at the seams for quite a while now, and the state has said we must have more jail space. How would you go about paying for expanding the jail?
Well, first of all, I've actually met with Sheriff Dave Wedding, and he and I have walked through and seen where the burden lies. And a lot of what we need to look at first is why people are in the jail in the first place. We have a lot of low-level offenders that could be housed in other places. We have a lot of mental individuals that could be in mental facilities, drug addiction facilities, and save the jail for high-level offenders that could be a threat to our community. So I really don't believe we would need to possibly expand the jail. If we absolutely would, there again, I'd like to write some grants to try to get some money to help out that, instead of giving it to the taxpayer.
There's been a proposal made of perhaps a new courtroom in the civic center, perhaps using the old jail space there to speed up the judicial process. And that seems to be a cost of maybe four million dollars roughly. Do you support that idea?
I do. I do think we need to increase additional courtroom space. I have not yet looked at this, but I think using the old courthouse would be. We have courtrooms in there currently. We have additional space that's unused. That is a beautiful facility that I wish our city would utilize more of. I know it's more in a privately, it's private foundations, but, you know, utilizing space that is currently not being used for any other purposes except for wedding receptions and things like that, why not? But yes, if that would not be a feasible situation, absolutely. We have very talented judges that are here, serving our community, and I think we need to get everybody have their day in courts.
All right. We'll have to leave it there. Joanne Hahn, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you very much, and I hope everyone will come and vote before November 3rd.
Yes, indeed. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm joined now by Angela Kaler Lindsey, candidate for reelection to the Vanderburg County Council and at-large seat. Angela, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Good to see you. Well, for starters, tell the voters a little bit about yourself and why you're running for reelection to the Vanderburg County Council.
Thank you. Again, my name is Angela Kaler Lindsey, and I am a lifelong resident of Evansville in Vanderburg County. I have been serving on city council since 2012, excuse me, on county council since 2012. I didn't previously serve on city council.
Right.
And I, Mike, I was born and raised here, like I said. I'm a retired teacher. I'm currently working as a small business owner, wife, mother, even a grandmother. And so just love working for this community and keeping it family-friendly, keeping your budget low.
All right. Well, as you mentioned, you are an incumbent. What do you see as the major issues facing Vanderburg County in the next four years?
You know, I wish I had a crystal ball, but because it's going to be really challenging the next four years. We just finished our county budget a few weeks back for 2021.
Right.
And we are in really, really good shape. I'm proud to say that our council works very well together, that we are very frugal, that we work with the department heads so that we're not going to spend money unnecessarily. And so we are okay for 2021. As a matter of fact, not only did we not have to cut any positions, we were able to give our employees a 2% pay raise. We were able to give our Public Safety Division, our Sheriff's Department, a significant pay raise as well. But we don't know what is going to happen 2022 and beyond. We know there are going to be other effects from COVID with the economy and just with all of the things that have been affected during this pandemic. It's just, as we always hear, it's unprecedented times. So our biggest issues on county council will be just continuing to keep a close eye on our dollars. That's our job, is to manage the county budget. And I feel that my experience, the years I've put in, the time that I've put in, the leadership positions, is definitely going to be an asset to making sure that we still keep our services that we need, provide what we need to provide for our folks in Vanderburg County, and to be able to continue to grow our county and to move forward.
I'm sure revenue is going to be a challenge as we make our way through the pandemic. Would you like to see more COVID relief from, say, the state or federal governments?
I would say that we will certainly look at and welcome any kind of relief that we can get from the state or the federal government. And we, you know, we have been able to take advantage of some of that. And like I said, this council budgets things very carefully. We know that in addition to some of the challenges with COVID and with revenues not coming in, we're still going to have the issue of the county jail. That's going to probably be one of the issues to continue to face us for many years, how to figure out, how to work with the sheriff, work with the judges to make sure that, you know, that we're taking care of people and keeping things safe here in Vanderburg County. So we've got that jail on the back burner for now, and we'll see what happens.
Right, right. What are your thoughts about expanding the jail? How can you go about paying it, especially in this, you know, uncertain atmosphere?
Yeah. Well, as I said, you know, it's definitely on the back burner for right now. They're just, it would not be prudent, it wouldn't be good sense to go forward with that project right now with these uncertain times. But we have really, I've been really pleased with things the sheriff's done, the things the judges have done. We've looked into different areas, being able to set up different kinds of programming with the judges to reduce having the number of people in the jails. We've also been working with some of our county agencies. We give $40,000, for example, to one of the groups that helps work directly with folks that have been incarcerated to prevent recidivism. So there are things like that. There are other things that we can look at, the drug courts and those type of things, to help reduce the rate of folks that are going into the jail without hopefully having to make any bricks and mortar expansion in the near future.
Now, with the upcoming budget, say, in 2022, can you foresee a lot of budget cuts or maybe even tax increases?
Well, I will say that I am not in favor of tax increases, and I would hope that we would be able to continue to fund our budget. We have been very, like I said, we've been very frugal, we've been very careful, and we've got things the right way. We, our county has complimented time and time again on how well we manage the budget. And so hopefully, we can, you know, as we're looking at this, working with the auditor's office and all the other folks, we should be able to keep a handle on things. And, you know, I'm not looking at raising any taxes. Like I said, I manage our county budget like I do my own. You know, don't spend if you don't have it and keep taxes low.
Yes, indeed. Going back quickly to the jail, there's been a proposal for maybe a new courtroom in the civic center with, in about 30 seconds. What do you think of that idea?
I think that's one of the projects that we're going to definitely be able to look at is adding and kind of doing some restructuring of the courts so that we can make the stay in the jail time less. A lot of times you have, they're waiting in the jail for their trial. So that is definitely a project that we are looking at to move forward and just to relieve the overcrowding in the jail.
Right, right. All right, we'll have to leave it there. Angela Kaler Lindsey, thank you so much for joining us, County Council-at-Large candidate running for reelection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. It was my pleasure.
Take care.
Have a great day. Bye-bye.
Thank you. I'm joined now by incumbent Mike Gabel of the County Council-at-Large, the Vanderburg County Council-at-Large. And Mike, we certainly appreciate you joining us here. For beginners, let's just tell the voters about yourself a little bit and why you're running for reelection to the Vanderburg County Council.
Well, I do love serving on council. I've been serving for a while now. And I teach government history in high school. And I've always had the interest, and when I decided to run several years back, I found it to be a very enlightening and very, I think, opening situation for me because I got to meet a lot of people that I would never have met if I didn't get involved in local government. I think it's also helped me get a pulse for something I've always had an interest in, how things operate and how our local county government operates. And I'm very pleased with my record, very pleased to be running again for another term. And I know we have great candidates this time. And Vanderburg County has been well-served by the current county council. And I hope to continue, and I hope to continue gaining the support from the taxpayers and residents of Vanderburg County.
All right. Well, tell us what you see as the major issues facing Vanderburg County.
Well, I think it's the same issue we've had all along. Since 2008, we had the tax referendum and the constitutional amendment limiting the amount of property tax revenue that could come in. And that's the main source of revenue for any local government. It doesn't really affect the state government, but it does have a direct impact on finances here. And I am really proud of the efforts and the accomplishments of our local department heads and particularly the county council because we work together so very well and we're able to balance the budget with the funds that we have. We have been able to provide all services. We've increased pay for local county employees, and we also increased funding by 5% to our local Sheriff's Department as far as pay goes. So we're fully funding all of the services we have. We are in the black, we balance our books. And unlike a lot of local governments across the country, Vanderburg County is well-served by its council.
All right. Well, you mentioned the property tax caps and how that is certainly a challenge for counties all over Indiana. And of course, COVID-related deaths and infections have been surging, and the pandemic has certainly been squeezing budgets everywhere. Would you like to see more COVID relief from the state and federal governments for Vanderburg County?
Well, anything we could get to help. I think with testing and certainly supporting our first responders and all the people who work in the medical fields, we need that support. Vanderburg County did appropriate $50,000 for testing for those who could not afford or didn't have insurance for the COVID testing, and we're out here to help as well. I hope that the more funds will come in because we don't know what's down the road as far as how we're going to be able to balance and make ends meet. Plus, we have looming over our heads the situation of overcrowding of the jails. So we have a lot of issues to tackle. Thus far, we've been able to operate in the black without any aid from federal and state. I don't know how much longer that'll continue.
Right. Yeah, as you mentioned with the COVID situation, what do you see in the future? I mean, we're all hoping for a vaccine soon, but how do you see Vanderburg County recovering economically from the pandemic?
Well, prior to the COVID panic and the issues we had, I think we have been in the very greatest time of economic growth and cultural growth and quality-of-life growth that our community's ever witnessed, with the medical center coming in, with the Ford Center downtown, with the softball, baseball complex on the east side, our beautiful riverfront, bringing in the LST 325 to our own waterways. And last weekend, we brought in a P-47, so we're keeping our heritage. We're providing for our needs right now, and we hope to continue to provide. I think bouncing back from COVID and coronavirus and work, that is where the federal government, state government could help out. We don't have the funds to augment or to help out people who are on unemployment and things like that. But to get by, people need to have cash in hand, actually, to keep the economy going. So hopefully, the government will come in in that regard at different levels. But as far as our jobs, I think we've done a great job working with department heads and within the county as far as providing, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue that.
Now, you mentioned the Vanderburg County Jail. It's been bursting at the seams for quite a while now, and the state says the county must have more jail space. How would you go about paying for expanding the jail?
Well, we do have some funds set aside through the safety funds that are set up by the city council, recently voted in, safety tax. They're able to use their funds to help augment salaries of fire and police and buy equipment. Most of our funds have been set aside simply for jail operation. We also have to fund courts, or not have to, but we do fund the courts, the civic center, all the roads and services. But the jail itself, I think we have to consider more help for those who have mental issues and more testing in that regard. One big issue that I have is the fact that the state of Indiana has placed all Level 6 felons from Vanderburg County, and sometimes that's up to 190 individuals that are staying in our county jail. It's not a prison, never was built to be a prison. And that really adds tremendously to overcrowding, and they're giving us very little money.
We are running out of time here, Mike. Mike Gabel, County Council-at-Large, running for reelection. We certainly appreciate you joining us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Joining me now via Skype is Vanderburg County Councilman Joe Kiefer. He's running for reelection as a County Council-at-Large candidate. Joe, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Always great to be involved with WNIN, such a fine organization, and really glad to be able to have an opportunity to talk to you guys.
We appreciate that. Well, I'm asking all the candidates here, if you would, just tell the voters a little bit about yourself and why you're running, in your case, for reelection to the Vanderburg County Council.
Well, I am a lifelong resident of Vanderburg County. Been here, I'm 58 years old next week. Been here my whole life, married, got four kids. Matter of fact, I've got my sixth grandbaby on the way. So we're pretty excited about that, so we love the grandkids. And I've been involved in local government for about 20 years. I've served as a city council person, as a county commissioner, and now as a county council member. And I really enjoy it because I just feel like Evansville and our community has really been good to me and our family. We've very much been blessed. And so this is my way of giving back. I know some people, they get involved in charity work, whether it's with WNIN or United Way or Red Cross. And it's always been, you know, my desire to serve the public through being an elected office holder, and I really enjoy it. It's something I feel I'm able to give back, some fresh ideas to the county. I love doing this, you know, whether it's a phone call from a I love doing this, you know, whether it's a phone call from a citizen saying, hey, can you help me get some gravel in my alleyway? Or whether somebody's calling to say, hey, we know there's some potholes that need to be fixed? All the way up to big picture items like, hey, what can we do to get I-69 built or what can we do to get this new bridge built?
Let's talk about some of those big picture items if we could, Joe. What do you see? What do you see as the major issues facing Vanderburg County in the next four years?
Well, I think one of the biggest issues and, you know, as a county council member, my primary duty is public, one of my primary duties is public safety. I mean, if you look at, the majority of our budget goes to the courts. It goes to Vanderburg County Sheriff's Office. It goes to the prosecutor's office. It goes to a public defender. And so public safety is probably our biggest item that we look after with our budget. And so I think one of the big ticket items this coming year is going to be what we do with the jail, the need for more space to, you know, honestly, I mean, right now, you know, we have overcrowding situation and we have to deal with it. Right now, we're sending a lot of people out of town to other counties to where they have space available. And so we're going to have to tackle that and that's going to be a big issue to tackle because it's going to be expensive.
Right. Now, it obviously, yeah, the state has told us we need more jail space. How can we go about paying for a jail expansion?
Well, the state of Indiana has given us, has given us the authority to use property, I mean, not property tax, income tax that would be specific only toward doing something toward a jail or other public safety related items, you know? And it's capital, it's capital project type stuff. So, and it only lasts for 20 years. After 20 years, it goes away. So they've given us a tool, but nobody likes to raise taxes and, and I know I don't like to pay more taxes. So it's going to be something we have to involve the entire community. And, and I had been advocating for public hearings on this prior to COVID-19, but then, then COVID-19, the coronavirus hit and that kind of put everything on hold. Well, let's hope and pray that COVID doesn't last for another whole year. Let's hope it goes away because we have things that we need to address and important issues that we need to address and, and obviously determining what to do with that jail space is one of them.
Now, of course, the COVID pandemic that you mentioned, how is the county going to deal with that? I mean, obviously it's very uncertain. Are you looking for more, say, state or federal relief? Are you going to have to make some budget cuts?
We've been applying for all types of federal relief and grants. Joe Grease in our county health department has done a spectacular job. And one thing I can say about Vanderburg County, we have some really good employees. I mean, we've got good department heads, good elected officials, and they do a good job. They really strive to do what's best for the community. And the health department has really stepped up to the plate when it comes to this pandemic. They've been tracking it. They've been getting the information. They've been doing everything they can do within their abilities to help stem this thing. And, and I'm very proud of the health department, some of the things they've done to try to control this. But obviously they're limited. I mean, people are still going to go out and about without masks or, you know, washing hands and things like that.
In about 10 seconds, Joe, would you tell us, would you like to see some stricter guidelines or some more restrictions on the COVID pandemic?
I think what we need to do is more communication. I'm not necessarily an advocate of closing businesses down because I have a lot of interaction with local businesses and people have told me how badly they've been hurt with this pandemic and it's been devastating for a lot of small businesses.
Yes, indeed. Okay, well, we will have to leave it there, Joe. I appreciate you chatting with us here. That's Joe Kiefer, running for reelection to Vanderburg County Council at Large. Joe, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you and I would appreciate everybody's support and vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks.
In Indiana, early voting ends November 2nd. On Election Day, Tuesday, November 3rd, polls will be open 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM Central Time. Registered voters of Vanderburg County can vote at any polling location. Voting locations are the 4H Fair Activities Building on Boonville New Harmony Road, Academy for Innovative Studies, formerly the Old North High School, on Stringtown Road, Bethel United Church of Christ on North Green River Road, Bethlehem United Church of Christ on Oak Hill Road, Bluegrass Church on Petersburg Road, Calvary Temple Assembly of God on North First Avenue, Kay's Elementary School on South Green River Road, Cedar Hall Elementary School on North Fulton Avenue, Fairlon United Methodist Church on Parker Drive, McCutcheonville Firehouse on Petersburg Road, Memorial Baptist Church on Canal Street, Methodist Temple on Lincoln Avenue, Northeast Park Baptist Church on North Bakey Road, Plaza Park School on Lincoln Avenue, St. James West UMC on Hillcrest Terrace, St. Lucas United Church of Christ on West Virginia Street, St. Paul's United Church of Christ on West Michigan Street and on Big Cynthia Road, Southern Indiana Career and Technical Center on Lynch Road, Washington Square Mall on Washington Avenue, West Side Christian Church on North Red Bank Road and Zion Church Educational Building on South Governor Street. Thanks to all of the candidates for taking the time to participate and thank you for joining us for WNIN's Local Election 2020 Coverage. For more voting information about local and national races, check out wnin.org, watch WNIN PBS and listen to WNIN FM 88.3. I'm John Gibson for WNIN News.